I see where Van Rampis has decided to go.
Good evening, like to call the first meeting for 2011 for the city of Muskegon on January 11th to order. I'd like to welcome Pastor Tim Cross from the Living Word Church of God. Please step up, give us the prayer, be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you have a hat on, I would ask for you to remove your hat, please. Pastor?
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, I'm reminded in your word that, you know, there's something new really about a new year, a new beginning. And Father, there are times that you say weeping may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning. And Father, as we look back at 2010, there's some things that might trouble our hearts. But Father, I thank you that 2011 is a new year. And Father God, I pray over this city commission and over our city here, Father, and I pray that 2011 will be a year of success, a year of going forward, a year of prosperity, a year of your help being seen. You're helping us in our city. Father, we ask in Jesus' name that as we look to you, that Father, you would help us with the struggles and the battles that are before us as we go into 2011. And Father, I thank you that your word says that you're abundantly available to help in the difficult places or the tight places of life. So Father, even as this city commission meeting, starting off with prayer honoring you and looking to you, Father, I pray that you would help each one of these city commissioners, our manager, the lawyers here, the clerks. Father, we thank you for each of them, and we thank you for your help and your grace being upon them for this year. And Father, we know that as you look at this city, you have good plans for this city. And Father, I pray for our leaders that they would be able to pick up what your plans are and what your directions are for this city and lead us into good things in the year of 2011. Father, we pray for our police officers, we pray for our fire department, we pray for the city workers, we pray that your hand, your protection, your help would be upon their lives, that Father, you would grant them grace to keep our area and our city safe and to keep the people of this city safe. And Father, we pray for their protection and your help for them in the difficult things that they face throughout their days. And Father, we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. By God, Jesus, through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Here.
Commissioner Wistuski?
Here.
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Absent.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Here.
Commissioner Spataro?
Here.
Mayor Wilmington?
Thank you. I know that Vice Mayor Gowron is ill, and so Vice Mayor, if you're watching tonight, we hope you get better in a hurry, and Jacob also. We have quite a group here tonight, so I want to welcome the students from Mr. Olahan's class from Muskegon Heights High School here. I see that we have one of our new county commissioners, Commissioner Plummer, here. So thank you for attending, we appreciate that. And I also see Mr. Lars here from the NAACP, the new president. Congratulations and welcome, sir. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk. Summary request: To approve minutes for the December 13th Commission Work Session Meeting and the December 14th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of minutes. Disclosure of potential conflict of interest under Community Development Block Grant Program, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request: Under Community Development Block Grant Regulations, potential conflicts of interest must be disclosed to the public prior to requesting a waiver from HUD. Rashida Mohammed Gillespie, 1044 East Isabella Avenue, has applied for CDBG assistance for plumbing sewer under the city's emergency repair program. She is a member of the Citizens District Council. The city attorney has determined that no conflict of interest is present in this case. However, this must be disclosed to the public before any further action can be taken. Staff recommendation: To approve the city's Community Neighborhood Services Development Department to submit the waiver of conflict of interest to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Agreement for legal services, City Manager. Summary request: To approve an agreement with Parmenaro Tool LLC to provide legal services to the city for 2011 through 2014. Staff recommendation: To approve the agreement. Special events policy, revision amendments, planning economic development. Summary request: The city commission approved the revised special events policy presented by staff on November 23rd, 2010. Some of those revisions included fee changes, earlier submission deadlines, and costs for city equipment and labor. In addition for any events with approved street closures, the closures must not occur until 12:01 a.m. the day of the event, and the streets must be open to traffic by 6:00 a.m. the day after the event. The commission had extensive discussion regarding the time of the street closures, however, and suggested the street closure time be amended from 12:01 a.m. of the day of the event to 6:00 p.m. the event prior to the event. In addition, the commission requested that events not requiring our liquor license or simply an extension of their existing license be allowed to take place on Labor Day weekend. However, event requests requiring a special liquor license must be presented to city commission for approval. Staff recommendation: To approve the revised amended city of Muskegon special event policy to include the new time for street closures to be 6:00 p.m. the night prior to the event and to require Labor Day weekend events requesting special liquor licenses to go before the city commission for approval. Setting work session and commission meetings. City Clerk. Summary request: To approve the schedule of meetings. Staff recommendation: Approval. Community Relations Committee appointment. City Clerk. Summary request: To accept the recommendation from the Community Relations Committee made at their meeting held on January 10, 2011, to reappoint each member wishing to continue on his or her present board and commencing February 1st, 2011. Staff recommendation: To concur with the Community Relations Committee recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Carter?
Seeing none, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
It's been moved by Commissioner Carter, supported by Commissioner Wieringel, to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wistuski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. New business. Page A, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 627 East Apple, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To approve the resolution and instruct the Community Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sales transaction between Mr. Christian D. Adame for the totally rehabilitated home at 627 East Apple, which is part of the city's neighborhood stabilization program through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Office of Community Development. Mr. Adame's purchase price is $43,000 with a subsidy of at least $8,000. The beautiful three-bedroom, two-full-bath home was previously vacant. As a part of the city's continuous neighborhood redevelopment efforts, the house was purchased by the CNS office with home funds abated for lead through our safe housing program and totally rehabilitated with neighborhood stabilization program funds. Staff recommendation: To approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would make the motion that we approve the sale of the property and follow the staff recommendation.
Second, it's been moved by Commissioner Shepherd, supported by Commissioner Spataro, to approve the sale of the city-owned home at 627 East Apple Avenue to Mr. Christian D. Adame? Adame?
Adame.
Adame. I'm sorry. Congratulations. Anita, did you want to come up, maybe introduce him to us?
We're so excited to sell yet another property, and this young man.
Tell me who she is.
Christian is 22 years old. This is his first house, and it is a very large house, but I believe over time it will be filled. Yeah, a single man with a house, you know how that goes. We are so pleased to have used all of the different types of funding to prepare this house, and when you leave or when you're driving around tomorrow, you can drive down Apple and see our big sign that shows that we are the proud owners and selling it to this young man, Christian Adame, and we're just happy that you approved the sale.
Okay, well, we're about to do that, I think. Mr. Adame, welcome. Congratulations on your sale, and for those of you who don't know, this is Anita Bailey, who's our Director of Community Neighborhood Services, so congratulations. Any questions or discussion, Commissioners?
Can I just make one more comment? Exit Realty is the realtor that has performed this sale, and this is the third house that they have done in the last six months. So we're very happy they are represented tonight by Diana Kane, who is our realtor for our NSP properties, so we're happy.
Wonderful. Go ahead. Well, thank you. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wistuski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Eliminate retiree healthcare benefits for newly hired nonrepresented employees. City Manager. Summary request: To eliminate retiree healthcare benefits for nonrepresented employees hired on or after January 1st, 2011. Instead, the city will match a mandatory 2% contribution into a healthcare savings plan. Staff recommendation: To approve the request.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I regret having to do this, but I would move that we eliminate the retiree healthcare benefits for newly hired nonrepresented employees as described.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Carter, to eliminate the retiree healthcare benefits for newly hired nonrepresented employees. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wistuski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other business? Seeing none, now is the opportunity for public participation. I've had a few people that have put up requests, and then when we take care of these, we'll ask if there's anyone else that cares to speak. Katrina Hansen, what I need for you to do, Ms. Hansen, is please come up to the podium and give your name and your address, please.
Katrina Hansen, 1080 Terrace Street, apartment 904. And my questions are regarding the Muskegon Housing Commission. I know that they're appointed by the city manager. And as far as the housing commission, do they answer to our city commission? And would it be the city commission that we as residents or as the resident council can go to if we don't feel we're getting problems resolved?
I can attempt to answer. Maybe to give you a little bit of background and to make sure that what you understand with respect to the appointments are correct, the housing commissioners are appointed by the city manager with the concurrence of the city commission, so it's a two-step approach. And the housing commission, the housing authority, you know, is an autonomous body. They operate their affairs without the oversight of the city. You know, we're not involved in their personnel actions or their financial operations. In terms of the housing commissioners themselves, if you're not satisfied with the operation of the housing commission, you should go and speak to, I would suggest first, the staff, the director of the housing commission, and then the housing commission itself, the board of directors, and that's your recourse. There's also an appeal process with their funding source, which is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. There's a process that you can go through to make them aware of concerns that you have.
Okay.
So that's the approach that I would recommend that you take if you are dissatisfied with the services that you're receiving.
Okay.
And you said your address was 1080 Terrace, so you located that at Hartford Terrace.
Yes. Okay. So it's the HUD that we go to as the next step?
HUD is the funding agent for the housing commission, and they have some oversight of that agency.
Okay. So it's a different agency than the appeal process?
The appeal process.
Well, you said that we could appeal.
You appeal any of your, and maybe that wasn't the proper word, but anything that you've raised with the staff or the housing commission, you do not feel have been adequately addressed, you could address that, those concerns with HUD.
Okay, address that to HUD. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Plummer?
Thank you, Scott Plummer, 314 North Corline. I am your county commissioner for District 7. I'm here to introduce myself again. I have been here before, and I'm looking forward to working with you all. As soon as my cards are made up, I will make sure everybody gets one, so you can contact me if you have any concerns or information, and I'm just here because, now, this is part of my district too, so looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we look forward to working with you, and I don't know if they have yet or not, but our office will be contacting with you so that yourself and myself and the city manager can sit down and just get to know each other a little bit and let you know some of the issues that we have. Okay, good. Derek Antal?
My name is Derek Antal. I reside at 1504 Montgomery, Muskegon. I'm the executive director of the Greater Michigan Compassion Club. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, you know who I am. I've been here before. The reason I'm here tonight, we came here a few months ago and found out the moratorium had been extended. We came here last month, found out you guys extended it again. I'm simply here to state two very important facts on the law before you guys make any final decisions, that we have a community of individuals waiting on this. I have an arsenal of attorneys waiting to dissect this. The main factor here is Section 7E. Please note, the state law says that all other acts and parts of acts inconsistent with this act do not apply to the medical use of marijuana as provided for by state law. So therefore, any kind of regulations or impositions you guys try to set forth that are not in accordance with state law is going to be a waste of taxpayer dollars in the end.
Thank you.
Sean Tate, 330 Catava Avenue, apartment 1. That is the house I rent. I also own a house at 287 McLaughlin Avenue that I bought at a tax sale October 16th of '09. I am presently still unable to occupy this house because I am struggling to get occupancy permits because it's just myself working on the house, and I'm doing a very good job at this. We are very close to getting into this house, but I am, it seems like every time I turn around, there's more fees, more fines, and stuff getting slapped on us because it just amazes me. I did not know that at the time when I bought the house, I came down and got, I'm getting pulling permits, and they told me, because it was a two-unit house, that they told me I had to put into a single family, that they're handing me landlord registration fees or landlord registration forms. I said, "I'm not going to be a landlord. I want to buy this house for myself." They didn't tell me at the time that if I would simply have filled out an agree not to occupy form that I just got, that I wouldn't have had to pay landlord fees. So I was just throwing them away as they were coming. Well, now, I was told that I have to pay those before I can do anything else. Okay, now, I have to, I have to register my building, my home that I bought, for an appeal of the vacant building registration fee, which now I was told that if it's vacant for two years, that I have to pay a $500 fee. Well, as of March 19th of this coming year, it will be vacant three years according to the city, which now they want to charge me $1,000. I didn't buy this house until October 19th of '09. Well, I feel that it should be on the city to take up that slack before the time that I bought it. So I don't owe you $1,000. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel. Excuse me. So as far as I'm concerned, the $500 that I'm being told that I have to pay as when I registered my building, they just told me that I could, that I had to pay 500. Then I registered it, and I get a bill for $1,000. I talked to Mark Cameron about this, or Mike Cameron, and he said I was going to have to pay $1,000 as of March 19th if I don't get an occupancy permit. And I have to prove all this within 30 days of the letter that I got, and I'm mad. So what am I to do? Who am I to go to? And I am being told that I have to do this, and I have to prove it. Now, if I don't, if there is no more proof than me having to go upstairs and make copies, and I have to pay for the copies now, if I have to get copies of all the permits that I pulled, and if I have to take them down from my windows, I have to take them and take them somewhere else and pay for those copies as well to bring them right back down here to prove that I don't owe you this money. Now, who is responsible? Do I still have to pay this money? This is insanity. Now, I am sure I'm not the only one that is gonna, that agrees with me. I mean, you guys instilled this fee. Who is it that we're fighting against in our city? I mean, all these houses are empty. I was told when I bought this house at the tax sale that this city would help me with this home. I'm on disability, I take care of my brother, that's also, I just got him disability, I bought a huge home to take it off the county's rolls so that it doesn't have to be taken down because I wanted to be a homeowner. And now I'm being told, I don't, I'm trying to pay rent and pay utilities on two houses. I can't get into the home. What's the problem with this? There is seriously a problem.
Well, that's an interesting story there. I guess what I'm going to suggest is that, I don't, I'm going to suggest that you call the city manager, bring the materials to him, so he can take a look and we can go, we can follow back. It sounds to me.
You're talking of the guy that does the, say his name, please, because I'm having a.
Right here. Brian Masay.
No, city manager?
Right here, Brian.
Okay.
Okay.
You're not the person I was thinking of.
Okay. It just sounds to me like there's two or three departments that are there. I'm not, and without actually following you through and seeing all of that, but if your story holds and.
It's very frustrating.
Yeah, I can understand. It sounds like it has been frustrating.
And, you know, inspectors and all that on top of it, it's just a nightmare.
So I would suggest that you, either if you stick around, contact the city manager at the end of this meeting to set up a time to take a look at it, or maybe he can do it now. I'm not certain of the materials that you have there, and if, we'll work that way first, and then I suppose if you're not satisfied, we'll see you back. Okay?
Good luck.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Joy Allen, 1381 Pine Street. And I'm here to address public safety. I'm the mother of the little girl that was abducted October 8th of last year, and there's been nothing done about it besides yesterday. It had been a month and a half before I had heard anything in regards to the case. I received a call yesterday from Detective Irvine telling me to come to the Muskegon Police Department. When I came to the police department, I was interrogated. I was told that basically I'm being investigated in regards to what happened to my daughter because they don't have a suspect. And it seemed as though because they're not doing their job, they're trying to find someone else to put it off on. And I want to know what the city is planning to do about public safety as far as keeping a kid safe and as far as my daughter's case as well.
Well, I think I'll, I'm not with the police department, but I would, we certainly have had some conversations with the police department on this particular case and also on violence in general. And I know that this has been an extremely difficult case, I'm quite certain for you and your daughter and the rest of your family in the community, but it's been a difficult case for the police department also. There hasn't been, from what I understand, a lot of information that's come back to us as far as help and assisting to identify other than the drawing of the assailant. And I know that this case touches the police officers very much, particularly when it's younger people. I can't answer as to why you have not been contacted in a month and a half or so, as you indicated. I'm not certain that I would agree with that. I would think that we would want to have some contact, even if we're telling you that we don't have any update as to what's going on. But I would say, even though there hasn't been anything that's found, that our chief of police took the initiative at Silent Observer to ask for an increase in the amount of reward for information, and we're working that way, and we certainly continue to appeal, even though you don't see it every day in the media, we certainly continue to appeal. I know Franklin Fidel has done a wonderful job at the Muskegon Tribune to keep it active in their newspaper, that we continue to look for the assailant, and we certainly hope that members of the community will help with any information that they might have.
But that's just that. It seemed as though the community is doing their part and the police are not. As from, starting from day one, this case wouldn't even have went this far. It could have been done October 8th because the person was still in the alley with my daughter. That's not what, the police are not releasing this, and the police work for the city. The police are not releasing that they allow my daughter to stand outside of a police car with no clothes on. But then you bring me down three months, two days later to interrogate me, asking me questions like, "I'm involved with the kidnapping of my own child?" I don't feel as though the police are doing their job. No, it's not the police, it's the community that is standing up.
Well, I understand that the community is standing up, but I think the question that you're asking and the question that needs to be answered is who's the assailant and to get that person into custody.
It doesn't seem like they're looking for an assailant anymore. If they're telling me that I'm, that they're looking at me now, that's, that's something out of a book.
Well, I understand your concern, and I wasn't a part of the questioning that you went through yesterday, so I, but all I can say is I can't imagine any member of our police department or another police department that would think that a mother who wasn't at the scene would be part of the assailant. But I don't understand police interrogation and those type of things. My guess is, is that they're probably trying to find out if perhaps, I don't know, it would be wrong for me to begin to guess. But I would, I would tell you that they continue to work on the case, but if you don't have any information and you don't have things to go on, it makes it extremely difficult to try to find someone when you don't have any information.
So is that your normal standard to wait a month and a half to contact somebody?
I, I, I don't, as I said earlier, I'd. I, I, I'm, I don't, as I said earlier, I, I don't, I think a month and a half to contact, uh, the family as part of this investigation is, is far too wrong and, uh...
And not cutting you off, but a month and a half ago, when I did talk to him, I contacted him, he didn't contact me, so it would have been even longer. I'm not getting anywhere with the Muskegon Police Department. They're not telling me anything besides, "We watching you now."
Well, I would, we will make certain that they continue to have contact to keep you up to date as to where they are on the case. Unfortunately, at the last meeting that I had a discussion with, we really didn't have any further information on anybody from, from within the community or without the community. And, and I even hate to even bring this thought out, but at the time, when, when this incident first happened, we were all concerned about another incident happening until we got a, this person that caused this heinous crime. Fortunately, that hasn't happened. Um, I know there were questions as to whether this person may have left the community. I know there are different avenues that the police department is working on. I, I would only ask, and I know it's hard for you to understand as a member of the family, that, that you continue to work with them as they continue to try to work to find somebody. They've been successful in many of the acts of violence that we've had this year in bringing, finding the people that they think were caused, to bring them to the court system to find out what has happened, so, um, but, but we need help. It's, it's, it's difficult for them to, uh, to try to do an investigation if they don't have anything to go on. And I will, uh, we'll make certain that somebody contacts you tomorrow, brings you up to date as to where we are without having you have the feeling of interrogation.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's anybody in the community that has any information on this case or any of the other cases, but in particular this case, we're talking about a nine-year-old girl who was on her way to school innocently and was attacked. We need your help. So please, if you have any information, please contact Silent Observer or the police department, whether it's our police department, state police, the county, or another local jurisdiction here, to get some information to us so we can help bring this person, uh, to justice. Now, I know that we have some other folks out here. Mr. O'Han, I don't know if you'd like to get up and introduce your class and what you're doing.
For the record, my name is Zeke O'Han. I reside at 3908 Norton Hills Road. And first and foremost, I want to thank you for allowing us to be here and thank you in advance for the collaborative that my students eagerly await. Uh, thank you to the panel for your time and to introduce our young people to the process that we are trying to process them into, uh, for the process that we are trying to indoctrinate them into, excuse me. I would also like to acknowledge how proud I am of my young minds to take on an initiative of their own volition and bring it to the forefront, putting the textbook into practice and seeing those professionals before them that emulate the rule of law. Thank you. We are really looking for a dialogue, an open dialogue. This started out as an initiative, an academic initiative that included law-related education and civic duty. It has turned into something that and more, um, as witnessed by the people before you and those that have come to support the people that have arrived here before you. The resources that have contacted our initiative have been remarkable and I don't doubt that it will grow even more. If I may take the liberty to thank the people who are present to support this initiative, thank you very much for turning up. And at this time, I would like to yield a floor to my learned minds, allow them to spread their wings for the first time in the academic process and the democratic process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Han. This is the time for public participation, so if any, anybody in the audience over and above the students would, would care to participate, we normally hold everybody to three minutes and I ask for you to give your name and your address, speak respectfully to the commission, the commission will speak respectfully to you, so. Anyone care to address the commission?
Brianna Skiver, 2508 Sanford Street.
Ms. Skiver, could you please pull that mic down and be comfortable and relaxed? We're just, we're just everyday people here.
All right. I'm here from Muskegon Heights High School to talk to you about the issues of public safety with the example of the assault on the nine-year-old girl. I am curious on what is going to be done to secure the public safety in our future as if, like, new preventative measures that you have recently come up with since the
Well, I'm not certain that I'm the right person to be asking that question to or this body, but I will give you an attempt at the answer. Since that incident, I believe that we've increased our patrols at school, prior to school time when students would be walking to school or going to get to a bus stop. But we need to keep in mind that we can't have, we're not in a position to have a police officer at every corner at all times. That's why we're dependent on all of us in the community watching out for all of ours, all of us. And that means students going to school, that means our elderly that are living alone, that means those of us that are healthy and have jobs. We, we depend on each other. So, um, preventive, I would guess, is that we're having, we're trying to patrol the areas where students would be walking to school before school and after school to help alleviate these instances from happening, to let the John Q. Public, the bad people out there understand that there's more police officers in the area at that point in time. I'd like to explain that we are all, all of us here are the city government. The seven of us up here, or the six of us, with Vice Mayor's absent tonight, are the elected officials, as is Commissioner Plummer for the county government. So we're basically the voices of all of the people of the community when it comes to the running of the city government and the budgets and those type of things. But it's the people of the community that are actually the government. Government receives their money from the businesses and the citizens, the taxpayers of the community. That's how we operate and get money. And unfortunately, over the last three, four, or five years with the downturn of the economy, both nationally and statewide, it means we don't have as many federal dollars coming into the state. The state passes dollars down to the city, also the federal government applies grants. So you'll find in most communities that there has been some reduction in services and certainly part of the services have been a reduction in some of the areas of public safety. And that's why you see it's more of a, when you, when you come to communities, you find us asking for, for help. And we, and we need to have help. We're talking about one case of a nine-year-old girl. I know that there've been a couple of other attempts since that period of time. We are very cognizant that the city of Muskegon and our police department is, and as I'm certain, all of our neighboring police departments are. But we need John Q. Citizen to help us. If you had attended these meetings in the prior last three, four, or five months, you would find this is not the first time that this commission has been challenged as far as public safety is concerned. And we're not trying to pass the buck as elected officials, we're really asking for citizens to help. There are a lot of weapons that are out in the streets in the city of Muskegon or the county of Muskegon. And many people in our community understand that there's weapons out there and they know who have them. And we need for people to begin to share with law enforcement people, where you know people that have weapons that probably are not going to be using them for hunting or target shooting or skeet shooting. And those are the weapons that become dangerous in our community. And so we need assistance. And I think with what your class is doing, you're not only learning to participate in government at the level here, but hopefully you'll learn to participate in a level where if you see there's something that's going on, that you don't turn your back, that you became, become involved in a positive way. And if you're not anxious to talk to police officers about it, that's why we have Silent Observer here in the community to begin to make those type of contacts with people that are, that are there. I get a sense from your class that you're reaching out and wanting as young people to begin to have dialogue. I know from talking to Mr. Owen that you're looking to begin to have some dialogue with the community. I know that, uh, your students at Muskegon Heights, it really isn't the city of Muskegon, but we're very open to having some dialogue with young people. And if you want to begin to get together with a small group of people, we're certainly willing to help.
I guess that's it for that question. Can we move on to the next?
Sure.
For the record, my name is Mr. W. Shanks. I reside at 1252 Fleming Street. And I would like to ask the question, uh, what preventative, what preventative measures have we put in since the incident?
Since the, uh, the rape of the nine-year-old...
Yes, one used it right.
Okay. Um, I don't know if the chief wants to answer and get any more direct with it. I, I can tell you from conversations that, uh, at least I think all of the commissioners have had with the chief of police and the city manager, Commissioner Carter and I were as at a meeting, is that there's some information that the police department does not want to let out, to let prospective, uh, non-law-abiding citizens know about. But as I mentioned earlier, we've increased the police around the times when students would be at school or not, but I don't know.
And I'll just have to leave it at that. I don't want to go any more detail operationally than that. Uh, we focus on our schools throughout the course of the year, our elementary and our middle schools and the high school. We're fortunate that we still have neighborhood-based police officers that are funded by a portion of the city income tax. Uh, we work with the Muskegon School District and they pay part of the salary of an officer who's assigned to Muskegon High School. And then the neighborhood officers are responsible for their middle schools and for the elementary schools in their neighborhoods to spend time there. So actually that, uh, is something that we do throughout the course of the year and certainly in light of this incident occurring, uh, we took a number of steps and have since that time to, I guess I'll leave it just increased patrols around the schools and I really can't say more than that, or I'm willing to, so.
Well, would the mother be laying on any of the things that you have found out or have been planned?
I'm sorry, can you re...
Would the mother be laying on any of the plans you have?
Yeah, I understand.
The mother of the child.
Right. Uh, we've been very open about, again, as best we can about what we're doing around the schools and, uh, beyond that, I'm not gonna go into detail with anybody outside the department.
Thank you.
I, I might make a, a suggestion because I, I know that there's concern within the community about the safety of our youngsters. And I know that it's sometimes difficult for families to, with jobs, to be able to, um, get their students, their kids to school themselves. So I might make a suggestion that if, particularly when it's the younger kids that we're talking about, is to have them perhaps go to school in larger groups and perhaps there's at least one adult in the neighborhood that could escort them. It may not be their own mother, father, grandmother, grandfather, but perhaps amongst themselves as neighbors, take turns to walk those students to make sure that there's an adult with them as they walk to school. There are times when, um, we need to step out of the box a little bit ourselves and not just depend on the police department who are sometimes undermanned and have so many other things to do, that we need to take it upon ourselves as citizens of the community to assist ourselves, so. Um, and it could be, depending on the start times of schools, I know that normally the high schools and the middle schools start earlier than the elementary schools, so it's, uh, older siblings don't have the opportunity to do it. But perhaps we can begin to, to have discussions within, within the churches, within the PTAs, within the neighborhood associations to try to get some adults in the neighborhood to assist the students to school. Thank you. Thank you.
Emma Tucker, 2826 Street. Respectfully, this is Detective, has there any, has there been any preventative measures been put into place, yes or no, since the rape of the nine-year-old girl?
Is there anyone else that would care? There we go.
For the record, my name is Mr. Shee Chapman.
Chapman?
Yes.
Okay.
3013 Glendale. We have another question. It is, what is the status quo of our public safety?
What is the status quo of our public safety?
Yes.
Well, I can, uh, speak for the city of, of Muskegon that, uh, over, I think it's the last two years that we haven't laid off any police officers. Uh, we've, we're trying to maintain a number that is needed. This governing body here, elected officials, has, uh, has made public safety a number one concern for our, our community and for city staff, albeit, uh, it might not be seen that way when you begin to have some heinous crimes that are happening in the community. But we are making it a, um, a number one item for us as far as maintaining in public safety. Uh, and that, uh, that also is in, included the fire department. I think we've got all of our firefighters that were laid off called back. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, um, so public safety is a number one concern and we will continue to work to try to make this community safer than it is today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ms. Serena Webb and, um, I reside 2200 Superior Street. And my fifth question is, what steps are you taking to inform the public, public of
Well, uh, normally through the Muskegon Chronicle, through, uh, whenever we've had folks like you that have come to the meetings and challenged the, the city, uh, the Chronicle normally does an article and as I saw that they did last night on, when you attended the City of Muskegon Heights Council Meeting, and, um, through the neighborhood associations. Sometimes it's, uh, we're not in a position where we, we do a, uh, a community citizens' newsletter, but where we used to have them printed, we don't have the money to do it, so you have to act, access it by the website. And, uh, so we probably don't have as many folks that are actually taking an active role and looking at the website where some of that information is available. So we, we use the Chronicle and we use the neighborhood associations and our neighborhood police officers.
Okay.
Tony?
I'd just like to add that myself, the prosecutor, to share for the meeting regularly with, um, representatives of the Black Ministerial Alliance. Uh, I've been to a number of churches, uh, this fall for some of the youth safety programs and prayer programs that we've had and been able to interact with a lot of, uh, church members, congregational members, uh, just this fall, and I believe they're...
And I believe they're going to start those up again maybe this month into the spring. I hope they will because I know for me, it gives me the opportunity to get out and meet with a lot of folks. And the ministers have been great. You know, they, they are really widespread throughout the community. They have lots of folks in their congregation and it really serves as, as a tool, I was certainly not aware of, I guess I would say the expanse, the outreach numbers that were available by working with that organization. And it had been great to reach out to us and we formed, I think, a pretty strong alliance that I think has been successful so far and certainly will be successful for, I look really kind of at the widespread metropolitan community, the city of Muskegon, Muskegon Heights, Roosevelt Park, Norton Shores, Muskegon Township. I think that bodes well for the future as a group that's been very helpful. And when you talk about preventative measures, I mean, all the ministers have my cell number. When something happens, I call a number of them right away because they can really get a lot of information out and likewise get a lot of information coming back to us. And it's been a really good group to work with so far and will continue to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Mr. Javen Matthews. I reside at 2034 Baker Street. And my, and my question respectfully goes to the chief. Do you think you and your department are doing a good job of keeping the mother and the public updated on any new information or information that was left out?
Any information that we've had in regards to this case that we feel that we can release, we have. That includes just before the holidays, we did a second media release. I think we've put the sketch that was done shortly after the incident, I think we've put that out at least three times, I think, to the media. So any information that we have, that we believe that we can share, that would not harm the investigation, we've put out to the public. But I'll be honest with you, we've not had much information. We've had lots of, they have lots of detectives working it, we have lots of detectives still working it, and we follow up on dozens and dozens of leads and we'll continue to follow up on what information comes in.
So is that a yes or a no?
You have my answer.
Okay. And also, if that's so, why haven't you told the mother about any new leads that, that you have had about her? Because if I'm not mistaken, she says she hasn't heard from you in almost two months. And she came and talked to us and she mentioned that she calls you guys plenty of times. And the day of our first meeting at Muskegon Heights City Hall, you guys are going to call her in and on the lack of your information and leads, you're going to blame it on her about her child getting raped? That she set that up? She's using drugs? She's selling drugs at our house? Because you guys can't get up and go out there and find that predator? So you're going to blame it on her?
I won't discuss any particulars of this case publicly at this point. It's an open, active investigation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two questions.
Name and address, please, again.
For the record, my name is Mr. William Shanks. I reside at 1252 Fleming Street. And what's your name? Or you're there.
Tony.
Chief Clyback.
Um, Chief Clyback, I want to ask you, do you believe this is an accurate, um, accurate sketch of the, um, perp after, um, in under the conditions of the little girl as she was tired, why she gave answers to the questions?
Well, it's a sketch that our sketch artist put together and talking with her, but beyond that, again, as I said before, I'm not going to discuss anything beyond that at this point. It's an open, active investigation. I can't. I can't. Wouldn't be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And this is for the city council. Is it safe to say that you are, um, forget this question, are you satisfied with the progress that has been made in this case?
I would, I would answer that is until the person that causes crime is brought to justice, no, we're not. And I don't believe our police department is either. Thank you. I, I just want to make, there's a lot of young people here that are wearing the T-shirts that has a, a picture of the, the assumed predator. And I think that's important. I know the picture's been in the paper two or three times. But I also think it's important for us to remember Ms. Allen because she's the one that's going through the suffering of the pain. And sometimes that's a picture that we tend to forget is, is the family going through the pain of, of what's happened. It's important to have that picture to bring the person to justice. But keep in mind, the reason why we want to find that person is to help bring closure to the family that's had to go through with this as, as well as the community, but in particular, the family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to, if you're going to have more than one question, why don't you stay up here and do your questions if you don't mind?
I don't have a question. I have a statement to make.
Sure.
We, as a group, are not only associated with the assault of the nine-year-old girl, we are associated in trying to get public safety back in general due to gun violence in the area of Muskegon County and future occurrences that may happen to come up. And I wanted to come up here and make this statement. We would very much like you to keep the lines of communication that we have had ready and the blogs and emails with us so we can try and solve future occurrences and do things like that.
Okay, thank you. I, I would, I know from reading the Muskegon Tribune that I think Brianna and Demaya were at least two memes that were in the paper. And I would suggest, I've asked Commissioner Shepherd, Commissioner Shepherd has been working with the young people within our community, and that she would be more, she said she'd be more than happy to be the contact person for your class, to continue to have open dialogue. And certainly, she's taught classes, or I wouldn't say taught classes, but she's done government classes with, with a lot of the young people within the city of Muskegon, so perhaps she can be an asset for you to call on. But again, young ladies and young gentlemen, there are people out there that, that are in the process of having the possibility of causing harm and if they've got weapons, we certainly hope that part of it, if you know, would be to let somebody in public safety know people that have weapons so that they don't cause harm to themselves or to somebody else. Is there anyone else that would care to address the commission?
My name is Marquis Livers. I am, live at 2829 Eighth Street. And the question I have is, why are you not contacting any other cities in Muskegon County to help bring this guy to justice?
Well, I think to answer that question is the police departments within this county of Muskegon work together on a lot of different cases. They're certainly aware that because an incident happens in the city of Muskegon doesn't mean that those folks don't travel into Norton Shores, Roosevelt Park, Muskegon Heights, Muskegon Township. So I believe there's always constant conversation going on between the departments. And in many cases, they put together a group to work on different cases. And there are, in all likelihood, other departments that have been involved in, in trying to help investigate this particular case as long, along with the other violent cases that have happened throughout the county.
So you're saying that you have contacted other cities?
Yes.
And my next question is, are, are they using other counties in the investigation too?
Other counties?
Yes.
I'd say the only reason that the other counties would get involved is if there was, if one of the assumed people to be involved in any one of these cases were in the other counties.
I'll just add, our investigators, detectives from the county meet on a monthly basis. It also involves a number of personnel, Department of Corrections, we invite a lot of folks into that because they're a source or a wealth of information for us. So, new cases are discussed each month, selected new cases are discussed each month amongst all the detectives in the county. And certainly that word spreads regionally throughout west Michigan as we go out, like you talk with your friends or maybe some kids in mother high schools about issues. Word spreads amongst our profession as well. And certainly, some of the tips have taken us outside the city, outside of the county. And in doing so, we would always contact another neighboring police jurisdiction if we had to go in that jurisdiction. So, yeah, I will say certainly, this case is on the forefront of all the agencies in the county. They're well aware, obviously, of the case and it's been discussed at the county, the monthly county detectives meeting.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Alexandra Price. I live at 2106 Robin Hood. And I have wanted to know, will, will they be able to, will she, the mother be able to get another sketch? Because from what I heard from the mother, that this one wasn't accurate because the little girl was just raped and she was tired. And they were just asking her questions like she just knew. So I wanted to know, what are you going to make another sketch for?
I would attempt to answer that simply by saying that if anybody has any additions to that sketch, we certainly would like to have that information. As the fact that the victim was the only one and perhaps her brother, that I don't know if he had an opportunity to see it, that if nobody else saw the assailant, it's awful hard just to come up with something. You can't come up with anything. So if anybody has any other information that is different from what that drawing is, we certainly want to have that information.
Um, I was going to say, I understand that with nobody else around, but we was wanting to know if you could schedule another one for the little girl to, you know, because she was tired and she had went through a lot and she didn't want to talk. That's what I'm trying to say, sir.
At this point, no, we will not do another sketch. It presents huge potential legal issues should be the case down, down the path or down the road. So no, there will not be another sketch done. We can't do that.
Um, well, how will you find him? Because this one is not accurate.
I answered your question. We can't do another sketch. I mean, a sketch is what we have. Hopefully, it is close to what the perpetrator looks like. And if it's not, then we'll work, keep working the case.
Thanks.
Commissioner Shepherd? I don't know. Is that it? No. You don't want to share some of your questions with the other students?
Well, one of the things is the statement. So, which you asked us to help you on investigations by reporting things that we know of that goes on in the county and cities, which we do. That's why we're here today. We'd like to help you. But another thing is you are the elected officials by our parents right now. And so, we expect you to do your job too, which we believe you are. But we want you to do it a little better.
Well, I, I would tell you that if by doing our job a little better or a lot better will bring this assailant to crime, we want to do it a whole heck of a lot better and get it here. But thank you, thank you for your comments and, and taking the time to be here.
And now I have a quick, well, but the little girl, which, where we told, we heard the story about her mother, she, the mother told us the story in our class one day. And the girl, the little girl said that the man was covered up, he had on a hood. And so, in the sketch, they say that the man is bald and that he, which they can exercise maybe, but how can they just say that the man is bald and that he is young?
Well- Commissioner Carter?
I really enjoy you guys' questions. Some of these questions, this is not the forum to be asking them. This is a public forum and some of this information is going to the people we don't want it to go to. So if you have legitimate and questions about the investigation, I feel those should be conductive between you and the chief of police in an area and an environment where you guys can get your questions answered. Again, some of the information cannot totally be released. You understand, we're on TV. So if we release certain information to the public, it's possible we could be releasing that information to the perpetrator. So you got to understand, some of your questions have to be sensitive to the area and the timing you're asking them. So I just want you to understand that. So you're not going to get the answers you request at this time because this is not the proper environment to ask those questions. So I just want you to understand that because you're really not getting a lot of answers because this is not the proper environment to ask those questions. So I just want you to understand it.
Well, I might ask the chief a question? Chief of Police? Uh, what do you think would be a good time to set up a meeting with you where we can ask you questions?
Well, listen, the police department is in an ongoing investigation. The best time to have a meeting with the chief is if you have any information to be added to this case. And then he will probably send one of the detectives that is actively working on it to come and take any additional information. Again, when it comes to the sketch, the unfortunate thing about this particular case is we had a very young girl who went through a tragic tragedy. She was the only witness that we are aware of to give information to the police department. She did the best job she could under the circumstances of providing information as to what the assailant looked like. And the police department artists did the best job of conceptually putting that together based on her information. The unfortunate thing is, is nobody's pointed to anybody based on the sketch that's there. We need people within the community and hopefully, I say hopefully, the predator is still in the community and not somewhere else doing the dirty work so we can bring this person to justice.
And I agree with you, Sam Mary, but without, I was kind of asking the chief, like, to see if he could give us a time and place that we can meet with him.
I understand what you were asking and my answer is, is that we're not going to have the chief, if you want the chief come to speak to you about something in general, we can probably make an arrangement to do that. But for the chief of police to come to a high school class to talk about an ongoing investigation, just in general, is not going to happen. If you have some information that will help the police department possibly solve this case, that's the most important part. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Mr. Marquis Livers. I want to ask, what forms and programs do you have to ensure that? What program do you have to ensure our public safety? As an idea that we can do to, as a community?
Well, I don't know that we really have any programs in place that you could call and get a program and say, this is a program that's there. What we need to do is we need to all depend on each other for public safety. And again, I'll make the call. If you know somebody that has weapons, if you know somebody that's committed a crime, the way to help as far as public safety is concerned is to get that information to somebody in law enforcement so that they can bring those people to justice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. Unless there's other students.
There is?
I'll wait till the students are done.
For the record, my name is Janice Mills, 332 Roberts. Is it safe to say that the police is doing all they can to solve the case? Or is it, they're just putting on a show for it to seem as they're doing their job? Because as Ms. Allen made it seem, as the police just start getting involved, as we start doing what we're doing, when we, it start coming more public, when everybody start knowing about it? It seem like they just showing off in front of the cameras.
Well, I'm sorry that you feel that way. We certainly feel the police department, it's a continued, ongoing investigation. We need, they need help in solving it. There, that's all I can say. Just sometimes there are cases that it takes a long time to get them done. And unfortunately, the family in the community has to go through that. I guarantee you, the police department would like nothing better than to make an arrest of the person that's responsible for this. For two reasons. Number one is to get them off the street and number two, so that they can work on other crimes that are out there also. Crime doesn't go away, or it hasn't gone away as of yet. Crime doesn't go away, or it hasn't gone away as of yet, so they're always working on a different crime. And whenever any new information comes in, they'll work on this. But if there's nobody giving any information, it's awful hard just to go and ask the same people over and over again, what did you see? Have you recalled anything? So we need to keep our ears and our eyes open. If we hear of somebody that makes some comment in regards to that day in October, we need to get that information to law enforcement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to restate my name and address?
Well, I think that you are Ms. Tucker, and there's Ms. Skyler.
Yes. We, since you say you have taken preventative measures, and we are not sure what they are, and to a point, you haven't taken that many, we have models and programs and aware, awareness situations, and all of these printed out for you to look at. Things that you could do with the community, things that can be done with parents, things that students can do.
Okay.
We have them here for you.
All right, good. If you could leave those with the clerk over here, and she'll get a copy of those to each of us and city manager and the chief of police. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joy Allen, 1381 Pine Street. I have a question for the chief. Is it normal to have a victim stand outside of a police car without any clothes on? And is it normal to have no ambulance come for her? I took her to the hospital myself. Is that your normal procedure?
If you'd like to come in and discuss these with me, I'd be glad to sit down with you individually and discuss that. But not in an open forum like this, because there's a lot of information. I think you may be misinformed, and I'd love to sit down and talk with you. I'd be glad to do that.
I can understand that, but that's just, that's just a question. I mean, that's not in regards to the investigation.
That's a question that certainly you and I can sit down and talk about. You obviously have concerns about the actions of my officers, my detectives, and our response to your situation. I'd be glad to sit down, meet with you, and talk about that.
So basically, you're saying you're not going to answer any questions?
What he's saying is, you're not going to answer the question right now.
Yeah.
I would suggest, Ms. Allen, that you, that you and the chief get together. There's some questions that you have about the last two months of the way the police department has, has handled this case. That is the gentleman to have the conversation with.
Okay, but not just the last month?
Well, from the beginning.
From the beginning.
Whatever. Whatever. All right, well, students? Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me? If you're going to do, but we'll make the call here, young man.
Well, we want to thank you for letting us come, and we were, the models that we presented to you, we will be happy to explain those to you. And on behalf of the Quiet Whispering Muskegon Heights High School students, we want to say thank you for entertaining our questions.
Thank you. Dyma? I don't know if I'm that, that you put down a contact number, but if you could put it down so Commissioner Shepherd could perhaps get ahold of you? Or Brianna? Either or? Or both? Mr. O'Han, thank you so much for bringing your class here tonight. It's, I hope they've learned something. I think we have, so, thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address the commission tonight? Commissioner Spataro? Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for all coming out, and I appreciate it. I enjoyed hearing what you had to say. I learned some things. I'm sure the rest of us did too. I just wanted to say that don't let this be a one-time situation. Elections matter. You know? Elections matter. And you look at our voter turnout rate in this county, it's not real good. Now, there's a lot of preventative things out there that we could be doing that we're not doing anymore, because the money's not there. We don't have as many officers as we used to. The state's cut things like the Great Start Program, they've cut back on Head Start, things that are designed to help people start school with an opportunity to be successful. And, you know, these things get cut because people who rely on those programs stay home on Election Day. So, take this to the next level. Stay involved. Get involved with your community. Get involved with your city, whether it's Muskegon or Muskegon Heights, or Roosevelt Park, or the township. And on Election Day, vote for people who say they're going to do the things that you feel are important. Because all too often, it's not happening. So, please. Thanks.
And then make sure they do them.
Yeah. Hold people accountable. Absolutely.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want all of you to know, and I want to thank the gentleman there for bringing you all together. This is one of the greatest experiences that I've experienced in my term here, to see you come forward, and that you want to be a part of helping to relieve the pressure and all that tension out in your community. And you know what? Most of you is located probably in Muskegon Heights or whatever, but I guarantee you, now's the time. We're going to get the students in Muskegon to come together with you, and let's get together, and let's make a difference in our community. I'm proud of you, and I'm proud of this gentleman, that he would stand up and allow you to do this. I have worked with young people on many occasions, and I thank you for gathering them together. There's a process that we can go through, and I want to be there to help you and to advise you on the best way to do it. And I want to be a part of what you're trying to do for the community, because that's what my concern is about. My concern is about you. You are the future. You will be the one making decisions for us at another day. So I want to make sure that you got it together. And I'm here for you. I will be your liaison person. You can come and talk to me, share with me information, and I guarantee you, we'll make it happen. I have my cards here, that I want to make sure that you all will have the opportunity to, you know, to converge with me. And I thank the mayor for the opportunity to be in that liaison. Thank you so much for coming.
Is there anyone else other than the camera? Oh, Kimon?
I would like to express a Happy New Year to all the members of the board, and to mayor, and all the people who serve the city of Muskegon. I just wanted to, I hope that we could come together with a sense of prayer and honor for one of our nation's leading people for peaceful nonviolence. And that's Dr. Martin Luther King, and we'll be celebrating his memorial, and celebrating his life next week, so I want to give honor to that and give thanks for everybody.
Thank you. Kimon Codas, and he lives on 6171 Duck Lake Road. Is there anyone else? Commissioner Wazneski?
I'd like to thank all the students for coming tonight, too. It takes a lot of courage and a lot of work to prepare statements and come and bring them to our commission. I'd like you to understand a certain perspective. As a community, when we come together, we have needs. When we want to improve the education of our children, we go to our schoolteachers and our education divisions and ISVs and so on, and ask the professionals to prepare programs to provide us with a better education. And when we want to improve our health care, we, as a community, we go to our county health department, we go to our hospitals and our doctors, and they are the professionals that we rely on for those services. And when it comes to crime, the police department are the professionals that we call on to help us. And they are resources in our community, like our doctors and like our teachers. And they are, they can become more effective the more we communicate with them, like our teachers and like our doctors. We need to communicate more with our police professionals. So it's important to understand that it's not the police department that's the enemy, it's the criminals who are the enemy. The police are there to help us out, but they need our help. They can't act alone. We can't ask the doctors to go out to the hospital and us not go to the hospital and hope that the doctors can treat us. We've got to go to the hospital. We can't expect the teachers to educate us if we don't go to the schools. And we can't expect the police department to help us do the job that they need to be able to do if we don't go to them. So we need to look on them as resources for us in our community, and appreciate the fact that they're there for our benefit and our help. I really think it takes a lot of courage to come to these meetings as students, and to present the case that you did, and I'm very, very impressed, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other items? Commissioner Carter?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.